And back to our staff, I forgot to ask you to roll the introductory video. So we'll, we'll get that going. Sorry about it. Good evening. If anyone is parking for this meeting or using the bus, you may pick up passes on your way out the door or now, and it will be valid for today only. Ethics reminder to the board, in accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the fairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote. We will move into our consent agenda. Does anyone from the public have questions or comments about this evening's consent agenda? Yes, Kurt.
Did you all want to add?
It's my next.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
No, you are on top of it. Do, I have a motion to add an amendment to this evening's consent agenda regarding the Swanonoa Steering Committee. This is a resolution to add two alternate seats to the Steering Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to amend tonight's consent agenda to include amending said resolution for the purposes of adding alternate members of the Swanonoa Small Area Plan Steering Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Sloan. Thank you, Commissioner Wells. All in favor of adding this to the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, thank you. We will add this. And with that addition, do I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Madam Chair, there's one brief correction on the minutes-
Yes.
-from the last meeting. It's in section three. Nope, I apologize.
Is this on the regular meeting minutes?
Uh, yes, from the last regular meeting minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, briefing minutes.
Okay.
Um, there is a section, um, in Presentations under the homeowner grant program, I would just request that there's a section, or is it FY 26, $155,000 was allocated through emails with staff that was corrected, and I just request we have that one sentence struck in from the minutes so that it doesn't lead to confusion later.
All right, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ball. Are there any other additions or corrections to the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as amended and presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, thanks, everyone. We will proceed into public comment this evening. The time limit for individual comment to the board is three minutes. Please state your name before you begin speaking. If your time expires, you may leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. All public comments must be directed to the board as a whole, not to individual commissioners, staff, or audience members. There is no clapping, snapping, or booing allowed. The board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the board during the same meeting. Please note, a group can elect one person to speak for 10 minutes if eight people in attendance relinquish their right to speak on the issue. All right, I will begin, and if I mispronounce your name, just correct me when you come to the podium. Sam Fontaine, I apologize. Just restate it when you come to the podium.
Uh, my name's Sam Fontaine. Hello, Commissioners. Um, so, I'm a UNCA alumni, a lifelong environmental ally, and we all know that the enrollment at UNCA is down right now, and the hope is that this new stadium will entice prospective students. Um, so I'm gonna tell you a story. Back in 2011, when I was looking for four-year state universities, I saw UNCA's commitment to conservation. This was unique among other state universities I had on my list, and went on to become one of the big deciding factors in my choice to attend UNCA. If this development goes through, potential students will know that UNCA doesn't take its conservation commitments seriously. While I have no suggestions for alternative courses of action, I've attended meetings and listened to public commenters who have presented alternative courses of
Hi, uh, my name is Steve Arpin. One issue that I'd like to bring up is, uh, and I can't get a consistent narrative, so it's a little hard for me to speak to it, but as, uh, I'm against this project for all sorts of reasons. But the, the issue I want to talk about right now is that, uh, I thought this area where they're setting up, they were not under the jurisdiction of the city and the county, but then I've been told later that they are, but that somehow they don't have to pay property taxes. Uh, and, uh, and so it seems to me that the, the citizens of Asheville and Buncombe County will be paying their share of property taxes. And my, uh, property tax bill says that, uh, 65% of the, uh, operating budget for the county comes from property taxes. And this is, you know, people using roads that they don't pay for that we will be paying for? Like I say, I can't get a consistent narrative, so it's hard to be certain. But schools, uh, and then the city provides police and fire, uh, water, the county, uh, provides sewage. One, uh, you know, I think it's worth looking into, because we don't have fair representation at the state legislature. Uh, and for them to be putting extra taxes on the people of Buncombe County and Asheville, this country was built on no taxation without representation. And, uh, so I think this is one thing that should be looked at, uh, that there seems to be some potential that we'll be paying their share of the bills year after year after year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Marina Brain?
Hi, you pronounced that perfectly. I'm very pleased by that. Um, hi, yes, I'm Marina Brain. I'm talking about the UNCA property like all these folks too. Um, I was born and raised in Asheville, and I'm a UNCA alumna. I graduated from their biology program in 2016. Uh, my first and favorite memory of the urban forest was from when I was a student. Uh, my ecology and evolution class ventured into the forest with our professor. Our assignment was to learn to identify native trees by bark and leaf shape. And this is a skill I still have to this day that makes me feel connected to the environment and allows me to educate others about our native ecosystem. Um, so when UNCA states that this property is undeveloped with no educational value, I know for a fact that's not true. Um, there are classes that use that property as well as professors who conduct research there. Um, a statistic you're probably familiar with is that according to the NC Forest Service, WNC lost about 40% of its trees due to Hurricane Helene. Uh, Buncombe County and McDowell Counties are at the center of this damaged area. This is significant to the health of wildlife as well as humans in the city of Asheville. Trees in urban areas significantly cool cities by providing shade to block shortwave radiation and modifying airflow. Removing UNCA's urban forests would make this area of the city more susceptible to dangerously high temperatures in the summer, and having more trees in our city also makes us less vulnerable to flooding. Studies have found that cities with more trees fare better in floods, and that the canopies of these trees intercept rainfall and their roots absorb water that would, uh, otherwise turn into runoff and mudslides. Uh, so the next time there's a flood, we need all the help we can get to prevent widespread destruction. Um, we know all too well the effects of climate change, and we need our community to be more resilient to future challenges, not less. So these decisions that UNCA is making is affecting the whole city as well. Uh, the people of Asheville oppose this plan. Uh, we have a petition that has over 14,000 signatures in support of saving these woods, and there are plenty of other properties around the area that are flat and better suited for the project. Um, that's the soccer stadium and retail stores. Uh, we hope the Board of Commissioners can help us coordinate a land swap with UNCA so that both the university and the community, um, can get what they need without destroying a mature forest. Thank you.
Thank you, Marina. David Walter?
I'm David Walter. Um, I bought my house on North Street 37 years ago. Um, so, we've been dealing with the chancellor, or trying to, since the excavators appeared in the forest on January 13th. We've, uh, the, the university's been very unforthcoming with information that we found out later that they had all along. So it took five months before they admitted to what they're trying to do. Um, 5,000, s- s- 5,000-seat soccer stadium with, uh, five buildings surrounding it, and the, uh, the parking. It's pretty guaranteed that if the project goes forward, the whole forest will be clear cut. There will, all the trees that are there are going away, it's gonna be graded, and then, you know, it'll be replaced with paving and the adjacent runoff and all that. Um, the, the chancellor did provide three community listening sessions, uh, one for the, the public, one for the staff and professors, and one for the students. I'm not aware that there was any support from anybody for the project. So, you know, that was their listening session, but all that means is that they feel entitled to disregard all the input from the public. So that's where that's at. Um, the people that control what UNCA can do is, um, the various boards, and the Board of Governors in Raleigh is the one that seems to have the final say. And those commissioners have expressed the desire that the chancellor should listen to the people. But I'm pretty sure the chancellor doesn't care at all about the people. But you, as the commissioners, as our elected representatives, if you were to pass a resolution unanimously proposing this project, that would have tremendous amount of weight. If the city council did likewise, that would have a lot of weight. But they've told us that they don't care what we think, so.
Thank you, David. Ann Walsh? Ann Walsh?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ann Walsh. Um, I trust you all know who Art Pope is. For those who don't know, Art Pope is considered to be the godfather to North Carolina Republican politicians. He's also a political appointee on UNC's Board of Governors. We're aware that Art Pope pointedly asked Chancellor Van Nort whether our local electeds supported their project or not. Let that sink in. Art Pope wants to know you, if you support UNCA's forest destruction project. Will our local electeds sit back in silence and effectively rubber stamp this Raleigh GOP-directed project that comes of zero local oversight, or will our local electeds side with their voters, who are passionately against this? That's where we are. We're not asking you to chain yourselves to trees. We simply are requesting you signal to Art Pope and company that you stand with your voters, and you wish, who wish to see the forest preserved. I'll remind you that almost 15,000 have signed the Save the Woods petition. Signing our non-binding resolution should be small potatoes, a drop in your political capital. What's the issue? We are confused at your hesitation to put forward a resolution to preserve the forest. Perhaps in this time of climate crisis, you agree with mowing down a forest? Eliminating a massive water sink, massive heat sink and carbon sink? You're okay with mowing down 20,000 trees? You're good with ruining a quiet residential neighborhood with traffic, crime, unregulated noise and lights? Because silence, doing nothing, refusing to put forward a resolution signals Raleigh that you're A-OK with those plans. We need a resolution now, before UNC Board of Governors vote mid-September. I also wish to plead that you make policy decisions not based on hype, or feelings, or charming personalities who crave a stadium legacy, but make decisions based on facts. And the facts are, according to a meta-analysis that examined 130 studies over 30 years, stadiums do not deliver economic booms to local economies. Full stop. I sent you guys that paper. I'm happy to send it again. I highlighted it for you, too. Um, I'll close with, please remember why you chose to be a leader. In this time of political disillusionment, voters are seeking leaders with vision, with courage, and with conviction. Please let that be you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Howard Lubel. Lubel?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Howard Lubel, and I feel like I'm going to reiterate what to some of what's been said, uh, already. Uh, but I am here today to urge you, as our community's elected leaders, our voice, to speak out forcefully and urgently against this ill-conceived project. The project is harmful to our environment, it's harmful to the adjacent neighborhood, it's harmful to our community as a whole, and it's harmful to UNCA. While the UNCA, while the administration of UNCA can choose to ignore the wishes of its students, it has no right to ignore the voices of this community. I have seen yard signs, I have seen signs in windows all over Asheville that call out to save our woods, but UNCA's chancellor has ignored those calls. Apparently, the calls are too polite and meaningless for her. This is, while this is sad, it's really not surprising. The queen always ignores the pleas of those she considers to be her vassals until they show up in front of the castle, which their pit, with their pitchforks and petards. And we all know what's happening in this particular case. Our community is being disrespected by the chancellor, who refuses to engage with it. And I have to point out, Commissioners, that when our community is disrespected, you, as our elected leaders, are being disrespected. Resolutions may be nice, and I speak for myself when I say this, not for any organization, but in my opinion, something stronger is needed. If you truly feel that this is a bad idea, you need to step up and tell UNCA that you will not permit your community's voices to be ignored. Tell UNCA that is, that if its project wants community sewer and water, as well as community infrastructure assistance, they will not get it. You need to tell UNCA that no community services, assistance, or cooperation of any kind will be available unless, unless it works with the community's needs. Sorry, I got a little carried away. Um, but I want to close by saying, as John Lewis wisely said many, many years ago, speak up, speak out, get in the way. I urge you, as our elected leaders, to speak up and speak out for our community. We need your help, and we need your leadership.
Thank you, Howard. Zach Thibodeau? Oh, you're gonna say your time. Okay, sorry about that. All right, David Clark?
I'm, uh, taking 10, but hopefully just five.
No, that is just fine. I do need to have those who are ceding their time to you, David, to please stand.
Oh, come on, people.
Okay. Do we have? I can't see behind the... Okay, we're good then. Okay. Thank you. And I do know that we have another one who's ceding their time, so if you just ceded yours to David, um, please note that in just a few moments. David, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, yeah, I'm David Clark. I'm a professor at UNCA, and, um, been there 25 years, so, uh, you, we're repeating ourselves tonight. I will try not to, and I will tell you more of the inside UNCA story, because what we all know is that professors have been around 25 years. We know where all the bodies are buried, right? So, we know the history of these things that we've been hearing from the administration, and have some context. So the question is, why am I the only current faculty staff member Oh, you wouldn't believe what's on my Signal app. Yeah, they are, uh, we can't get a, a get-together out through our faculty senate. So we are being silenced, really. And of course, we're as pusillanimous as the next person, so all it takes is firing six or seven of us, and we clam up pretty quickly. Right? So we lost faculty, and that really sent a chill through the air. Uh, the students, we're hoping, will be a little bit more vocal, and of course, the university values the students' opinion much more than us. If we go away, they have a party. Right? If the students go come, oh man, that's, that's the enrollment crashing down to the ground. Right? So I'm giving you some idea of what's going on there. Um, so it's muted opposition, but no one is really in favor of this, uh, on my end. And it's, it's really, it's not that we're such environmentalists or something. It's called cui bono. To whom goes the benefit? To whom the benefit? And the faculty, some of them, before the plan was announced, would say, maybe give them a chance, maybe we'll get that childcare center. Maybe we'll get, uh, affordable housing for new faculty members. That'd be great. Like something like Warren Wilson did, or something like that. None of that appeared. It's market-rate housing, and the markets, of course, exorbitant. I live right next to the woods. The house next to me, identical, will be running for $3,200 a month. The question I had to myself, when my neighbor asked me to put it on the UNCA forum, is why bother? Who can afford that rent that's making a UNCA salary? It doesn't add up. Right? So we didn't see anything from the university's side that would justify clearing the forest, and that is kind of the end of, uh, the interest from faculty there. Right? Now, we do know, uh, what I've been trying to get a hold of, because I'm a landlord myself, market, uh, for rentals is shifting in the county. Right? More units are coming online. We lost population to Helene. Vacancy rates are going up. So I'm not convinced that we need more housing. We definitely need more affordable housing, but again, there's no mechanism in this proposal to do that. That would not be remunerative. The developers would not like that. And we all know, I've been around long enough, I'm sure you all have, that the history of affordable housing in these projects, as they come online, it shrinks and shrinks and shrinks. We've been told to call it value engineering at UNCA. Like, we did there too long, and now the price of rebuying concrete's too high. We can't afford it. I'm sorry. Right? So we have, um, those things. Also, when we learned that we're getting a mere 1.7 million a year, and that's until 2030, so waiting five years for that cash to start flowing, um, that in comparison to our $80 million budget? Trifle. What is that gonna do for us as a university? I don't, I don't see that. Right? Um, I'd also like to bring to your attention the budget resolution. I hope you've all heard of this. Uh, we first, um, learned from Brian Turner, our state rep, Senator, that, uh, no, rep, right? And he, uh, he said, you know, there's something in the budget bill that's going through the legislature, and I just saw it, and I thought you guys might like to know. And it exempts state, uh, university-owned land in Buncombe and Watauga County from levels of oversight and review. And he had no idea how it got in the bill, or really what it meant. And we asked at city council last week, Brad Branham, councillor for the city, also a little perplexed what this means. Right? So, it seems to me that your authority as a Board of Commissioners is being usurped. So I hope you look into this and tell us what you can find out, because we get stymied on these things. They don't answer our questions about that. Who put that in? What does it mean? Does it have to do with the noise ordinance? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we want your help, right? And we promise we'll stop bothering you if you pass a resolution. Right? We could all be home eating dinner, couldn't we? I mean, come on, look at these people, you know, they're, you know? So we'll, we'll stop afflicting you if you can do your part and pass a resolution, and anything else that you can with advising us. We really need advice on how to operate in this political system, right? So that's, that's our big ask. The, um, mistake we made, and I'm really talking more to these guys, is, uh, focusing our attention on the chancellor and not the Board of Governors. What I've determined is that she is the human heat shield. Right? 15 of 17 chancellors have been put in place by the Board of Governors. That process has changed. It's definitely top-down. So she has been dispatched from the Board of Governors, and we would like your help reaching them. You might ask about the Board of Trustees. Well, they were sidelined, too. Roger Aiken was out of the loop, the chair of the board, about the soccer stadium plan, as much as we were. Right? So it's clear where that power is. We have to reach our audience in Raleigh and hope for your help in all kinds of ways on that. Now, we're not soccer haters. We're not housing haters. Right? But we would like to find a suitable place for both of those things, and believe that, um, destroying our last intact urban forest in the city of Asheville, we can do a lot better than that. Right? So I'll end by just saying that there is, uh, there's a right and a wrong side of this one. I'm convinced of it. Right? So let's think that one through. What will future generations say when you said, oh, you took this nice, mature forest that was the last remnant of its kind, the last of the Lower Montano Hickory Forest in Asheville, that's what we call it, and then converted it to concrete with all kinds of drainage problems and housing that may be superfluous? And a major league sport? Don't we have to start with baseball and basketball and so forth? Aren't we maybe the jumping the gun there? Right? So think about your legacy in that regard. Uh, when they put, uh, Galileo into detention, house arrest, he said, yet it moves. He was referring to the moons of Jupiter. And what he noticed with his cheesy little telescope is that one thing resolves around something other than the earth, and therefore we are not the center of the universe, and that was a threat. He said, yet it moves. E, you can lock me away, but there are rules of science, and this is one of them. Right? What we know about climate change, what we know about how these forests can help ameliorate conditions in the city, what your legacy can be in that regard, that is crystal clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Chris Cotida? And Chris, I believe you were signed up for 10 minutes?
That's right.
All right. Do we have seven others who are ceding your time? Great. Thank, thank you all. All right.
All right, it's a tough act to follow. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Chris Cotida. I'm the president of the Five Points Neighborhood Association. I'm also an organizer with Save the Woods. We're living in a historic moment here in Buncombe County. As we recover from Tropical Storm Helene, and more broadly from the pandemic, we have a rare opportunity to shape the future of our community. This moment demands that we as citizens, and you as our elected leaders, exercise bold, visionary leadership. visionary leadership. Some will say that a soccer stadium complex with housing and retail is bold and visionary, but I would argue it's just the opposite. This is a generic isolationist development that you could easily drop in any location in the country, just as it is. It has no authentic connection to Asheville, to the surrounding neighborhoods, or even to UNCA itself. Bold visionary leadership begins by asking, what does Asheville truly need? How can we exercise creativity and resourcefulness to guide this community through an uncertain future? How can we include and uplift everyone to meet the moment without cowering to the demands of an increasingly corporatist, totalitarian, and hostile political environment? How can we pursue the sustainable economic growth without mortgaging our environmental resilience? Recently, the city of Asheville hired the Urban Land Institute, bringing together experts in disaster recovery from all over the country. In their presentation to the city last Friday, they highlighted the rare opportunity for an economic reset in Buncombe County. It highlighted the central role tourism plays in our local economy, but with a twist. The bold visionary leadership these experts demonstrated called on us to create shared spaces that protect Asheville's authenticity without themed packaging. Spaces where tourism and civic life intersect, ensuring that these public spaces serve the community first. Our bold vision for the UNCA Woods is that UNCA enters into a partnership with the county, the city, and a private foundation to transform the woods into an arboretum, that the community is engaged and involved to help with trail maintenance, removal of invasive species, and stewardship of the land. The UNCA students continue to benefit from the urban forest as an outdoor classroom and a sanctuary for their mental health, that the urban forest becomes an accessible destination for tourists looking to experience firsthand why Asheville is known for its connection to nature. By transforming the woods into an arboretum, we could create a rare and accessible green resource, walkable from downtown, connected to our Greenway system, and establishing Asheville as a bold visionary leader in sustainable urban development. It would seamlessly connect ecotourism and civic life. This would epitomize what the Urban Land Institute called recreation as an economic strategy. And that's to say nothing of the environmental benefits we'd realize by keeping this forest a forest, or more accurately, the peril we would avoid by not clearing and leveling this land to replace it with permeable surfaces. I'm gravely concerned about the stormwater impacts of the proposed development, as we all should be. I should mention that the preservation of the urban forest does not mean that UNCA and the Asheville City Soccer Club can't build their 5,000-seat soccer stadium elsewhere. Multiple architects have independently determined that a stadium can fit where the current athletic fields stand. Building on this location, which is already flat, will be easier, faster, cheaper, and less destructive than building in the woods. For context, one architect estimates that to build a soccer stadium in the woods, the dirt removal alone would cost $16 million. I spoke of Buncombe County's moment of transformation, and similarly, UNCA is undergoing a transformation of its own. Like all colleges in this country, UNCA faces declining enrollment, shifting demographics, and an urgent need to adapt in order to survive and thrive in the long term. And just like our county, their transformation requires bold visionary leadership. Regrettably, building a commercial entertainment complex with no connection to their academic programs or their brand identity as a university is not visionary. On the contrary, I think it's tragically short-sighted. This development literally and figuratively isolates them from the surrounding community at a time when they most need to be embraced and supported by this city and county. UNCA's strength, and indeed its survival, depends on the goodwill of the people of this region, the students who attend, the families who support them, and the alumni who donate. A project like the arboretum that we propose would forever endear UNCA to the people of Asheville, ensuring decades of steady support. By contrast, this noisy, polluting entertainment complex would drive a wedge between UNCA and the surrounding community, cutting it off from the people it needs most. The problem is not just the project itself, it's the process. UNCA has acted with little transparency, respect, or regard for the surrounding neighborhoods. Once the land is leased to a private developer, our rights to transparency will be severely diminished. The university has signaled no interest in meeting with the community before making such a decision, and that is why this is such an urgent call to action. We urgently need your support while there is still time to impact the course of this development. We have about six weeks before the Board of Governors is expected to vote on the lease to the developer. Once that lease is signed, we're at the mercy of whatever terms go into it and whatever decisions the developer makes with the latitude that they're given. Making matters worse, the North Carolina Legislature is currently attempting to strip the city and county of any remaining control we might have over this development via local ordinances. We understand the importance of economic development, entertainment, and tourism, but we also know there's no Asheville and there's no Buncombe County without the people who live here. By preserving and investing in the urban forest, UNCA would not only align its growth with the community's values, but also secure its place as a true partner in Asheville's future. Isolating itself from the community would be a mistake that will haunt the university for years to come. Right now, the leaders in this chamber have the opportunity to exercise bold visionary leadership and help prevent this grievous mistake. While it's not within your authority to approve or deny this project, you can make a choice. You can choose to stand with the people of Asheville and sign a resolution opposing this development. The Board of Governors in Raleigh is listening, and they will hear either your bold visionary declaration or your complicit silence.
Thank you, Chris. Christine Arlo? Oh, you did, okay. I have an Elizabeth, but not a last name. She's seated as well. What about Marta? I don't have a last name either. Seated as well, okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak that did not sign up and did not cede your time? All right, thank you all. We appreciate you spending some time with us this evening. All right, we'll move into our good news this evening, and DK Wesley and Jason Rogers are joining us to provide a little more information about our Building Inspectors Association Award. And if you've spoken and you don't want to stay for the meeting, you are welcome to go.
Good afternoon, Chair Edwards and Commissioners.
Good evening.
It is indeed my pleasure to share this great news with you all. You can probably tell from the slide there that I was both surprised and delighted when I went to the North Carolina Building Inspectors Association Annual Conference. I thought I was going to support the department, right? And also support Director Bob Haynes, who was passing the gavel at that conference and being celebrated for his amazing year as President of the Association. To my surprise, I was able to, I was asked to accept the award for Buncombe County as Permits and Inspections Department was provided the Jurisdiction of the Year Award for the entire state of North Carolina. So Jason Rogers, who is Assistant Director for the Department, and Samantha Stanford is going to accept the award officially, after I read the words that were shared during that presentation. So this award is given to the jurisdiction within the association who have distinguished themselves through their dedication and professionalism, standing out as a role model within the state, and whom have strived to maintain the highest standard of excellence. In September of 2024, this was one of the hardest-hit counties, Buncombe County in North Carolina. Over 2,000 damage assessments within their jurisdiction were handled with the assistance from the Disaster Assistance Response Team. They also worked very closely with the North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal in developing guidance for the installation of temporary dwelling units provided by FEMA. And without those collaborative efforts, other jurisdictions would have struggled in dealing with the issues for installation. Buncombe County Permits and Inspections successfully permitted and released for occupancy over 60 FEMA dwelling units for those that were unable to reside in their home. Over 600 emergency repair permits were issued in three months post-storm, and the team of code officials still maintained the standard of next-day inspections while providing power restoration inspections the same day, while maintaining planned review of one day for all residential building projects and three days for all commercial projects. That caliber of code officials has made all of this possible. Each of them take pride in the work they perform each and every day to keep all the residents and visitors safe and not delay projects with extended planned reviews or delayed inspections. So help me congratulate Permits and Inspections for their recognition as the North Carolina Building Inspector Association Jurisdiction of the Year.
Thank you, Commissioners, very much. This is a very proud moment for all of us. The team worked extremely hard, not just the inspection team, but the permit staff. But to be very clear, without our planning staff, without our environmental health staff, and our fire marshals, and all the in-kind services that make us who we are, none of this would be accomplishable. These other people that help us do what we do every day make these achievements very possible. And we'd like to just express how much we really care for their support as well. Thank you all.
Thank you, and congratulations again. Manager Pender, do you have a report this evening?
No, ma'am, no report.
All right, we have no presentations, so we will move into our first public hearing this evening. Gillian Phillips is joining us to share a bit more about a rezoning.
Good evening, Commissioners. There we go. I am here to talk to you about ZPH 2025-0011, and it's our Clark's Chapel Road zoning text amendment. Just to let you know, this hearing was properly noticed and all applicable parties notified of the meeting in accordance with general statutes and county code. This includes legal ad in the Asheville Citizen Times, notice mailed to property owners, notice on the county's website, and physical posting on the site. The applicant and owner for this property is the hatches of Michael Hatch Glass Company, and it is one parcel located at 60 Clark's Chapel Road. The property is .73 acres. The property currently contains a glass-blowing studio that was previously permitted as a special-use permit within Weaverville's former ETJ when this property was in the ETJ for Weaverville. It is served by Septic and City Water. The application is to rezone from R3 Residential to Commercial Service. You can see the current zoning map on the left side of the slide and the proposed rezoning on the right. This parcel is located in an area identified by the Buncombe County Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Plan map as mixed-use area two. This chart compares the dimensional standards of the zoning district. If the rezoning request is approved, it would reduce the setbacks and increase the allowable height, and it would reduce, if the property ever was served by sewer, the lot size by 1,000 feet, 1,000 square feet, sorry. Surrounding development does include some residential development, but also includes a church and associated cemetery, a mulch yard, and another local artist's studio. The rezoning request has been found to be consistent with a number of county plan recommendations, such as the Future Land Use Plan map category and description, density, potable water, proximity to transportation corridor, no steep slope or high elevation, it's not in a flood hazard area, it has an extremely small amount of high or moderate hazard on the Slope Stability Index map, and the proposed zoning district is compatible with the existing uses in the area. Staff recommends approval. The Planning Board held a public hearing on May 19, 2025, and voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners. And I'll answer any questions you have and also just put up the draft board motions.
Thank you, Gillian. We do have to hold a public hearing, and so we will do that first. I will open the floor at 5:55 for our public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? All right, I will close the public hearing at 5:55 as well. Commissioners, are there any questions or discussion about this rezoning? All right, if not, do we have a motion to approve or deny? Second. Do we need to use some specific language on that? If we can pull that up, that'd be great. Thank you.
Gillian, I was trying to get out of reading a full thing, so I apologize. Happy to do that.
Here, I've got it.
This time, I'll move to approve the rezoning of the subject property as it is consistent with Buncombe County 2043 Comprehensive Plan.
Second, and second. All right, thank you, Commissioners Moore and Wells. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, rezoning is approved. Thank you, Gillian. I can tell you all, I drive by Hatch Glass multiple times a day, and having this corridor of commercial zoning has been a nice addition to this end of Clark's Chapel, so please to see this. All right, Shannon Capazelli is on her way up. We have another public hearing, and she is going to discuss a text amendment. Good evening, Shannon.
Good evening. So this is a text amendment to our zoning ordinance, and it's requesting a public hearing tonight. This is for a zoning public hearing 2025-00012 titled "The Permitted Uses and Dimensional Requirements Text Amendment." So the purpose of this text amendment is to change the zoning ordinance to end mandatory single-family zoning in Buncombe County. It also has the goal of modernizing the Beaver Dam District standards, and this is a really big milestone for the county as we work to increase our housing options, our opportunities for residents and property owners, so I'm really excited to be bringing this to you tonight. First, a little bit of background on this. Land use regulations have actually been existing in the Beaver Dam District since 1981. It would be almost three decades before we had county-wide zoning adopted. So Beaver Dam's had zoning for a lot longer than the rest of the county. However, the Beaver Dam regulations were not updated when we adopted county-wide zoning or when we adopted the overlay standards a year later. So this has caused conflicting standards for staff, this has caused confusion for residents and property owners in developing their property because of redundant standards and other things that have made it difficult to understand what the special standards are for Beaver Dam compared to all of our other districts. And it is the only district that we have that prohibits more than one home per lot, no matter how much acreage you have. So that is conflicting with our push for more missing-middle housing and from several of our Comprehensive Plan recommendations. So for example, residents cannot convert a basement into a dwelling space, they cannot build a mother-in-law suite or put a second home on their property, no matter how much acreage they have. Other standards that do not align with county-wide zoning is one of the other reasons we're bringing this modernization text amendment. For example, most of Beaver Dam's standards actually exist in a footnote. So we've used the Comprehensive Plan as a guide for the recommend- So we've used the Comprehensive Plan as a guide for the recommend, recommended ta- uh, text amendments, and we look to the Growth Equity and Conservation Chapter specifically related to the three outline, uh, actions that are outlined on the slide in front of you, and these include evaluating regulatory barriers to infill, redevelopment, and adaptive reuse, considering allowing every residential lot to have at least two homes, and implementing regulatory actions to promote the GEC goals, for example, by increasing density in our growth areas. This is a summary of the proposed text amendments for Beaver Dam, and the, they include aligning the setback definitions with our other zoning districts, simplifying the statement of district intent, allowing two dwelling units per lot, updating the dimensional requirements to align with other districts, adding disturbance and impervious surface limits to the dimensional requirements table, eliminating the footnotes, and permitting alternative path and conservation subdivisions, subdivisions in this district. So this hearing was properly noticed in the Asheville Citizen Times first on July twenty-fifth, and then again on the thirty-first, as well as placing a notice on the county's website. The Planning Board recommended approval at their June sixteenth meeting. And, uh, the request is to hold a public hearing tonight, um, with a vote that includes a statement of consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. And I do have some draft, um, board motion examples on the next slide, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to go through those.
All right, we will open the floor for our public hearing first and then come back for questions and discussion. I will open the floor at six oh one for our public hearing, and Susan Bean has, um, signed up for comment. Good evening, Susan. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Susan Bean, and I work for Mountain True, leading our Neighbors for More Neighbors WNC program, focused on housing solutions for our community and for our environment. Housing is too expensive in our area for many locals to find a place that works for them. We had a shortage of housing options before Helene, but the storm has made the problem much worse. Not having enough homes to rent or buy means there is more competition for the few homes that are available, and that drives those costs ever higher. Perhaps like many of you, I have dealt with the disappointment of close friends and valued colleagues leaving our area, and in some cases, the state, because they could not find any place to live within their price range. I'm sure you all know people struggling with the same problem, and I'm grateful for your service to our community on this board where you are working towards solutions. We desperately need more small homes in places where infrastructure already exists, and on relatively flat land that is not located within the floodplain. That is the best way to increase housing choices for our neighbors while minimizing negative impacts to our natural environment and avoiding the safety hazards posed by landslides on steep slopes or rising waters in our floodplains. Allowing two homes per lot in Beaver Dam Valley is just one small pathway to creating more homes for our neighbors, whether they are older adults hoping to age in place, or young workers trying to find a place for themselves and their families. So on behalf of the ridges and floodplains that we want to protect from development, and on behalf of the neighbors in our community who need more housing choices, I strongly encourage you to vote in favor of this amendment today. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Are there any other members of our audience who did not sign up who would like to speak? All right, there being none, I will close the public hearing at six oh three PM. Commissioners, are there any questions for Shannon? Any further discussion?
I just want to say I'm so excited that we're having text amendments starting to come to us, so this is a wonderful move forward, and I appreciate all the tremendous work of staff on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Wells. This is, this is a big moment in Buncombe County history that, um, we are ending single-family zoning, um, after many, many years of work and making really significant progress with, in, in putting a dent in our affordable housing stock and the need that we have. So this, this is a big moment. With that said, if there are no other questions or comments, I would, um, ask for a motion. Will we pull that correct language up on the slide, please? Do you have it with you? Okay.
Motion to approve the text amendment as it is consistent with the Buncombe County Twenty Forty-three Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Text amendment passes. Thank you to our planning team for great work. We appreciate you. All right, we will move into new business, and John Hudson is joining us for, um, several budget amendments. The first is with ABEX Article forty-six.
Good evening.
Evening, John.
This first budget amendment uses Article forty-six sales tax funds to establish and fund a project for the Allied Health Building Cooling Tower replacement in the amount of one million dollars. This replaces a plastic tower with stainless steel for a life expectancy of twenty or more years.
Are there any questions? Not, do we have a motion? Oh, wait a minute, I think we're.
Yes.
Will we have a motion from Commissioner Wright's side? Do we have a second? Thank you. All in favor say aye. Oh, did we have one more question? That was it? Okay. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, John, and you have a second amendment for us.
I do. I believe that David Swett and Rebecca Smith are here with a presentation prior to this amendment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, David Swett, Director of Health and Human Services, with Rebecca Smith, Director of Social Work Division. Uh, we're coming before you today with a recommended board action for you to accept, allow us to accept and, uh, budget a little over ninety-one thousand dollars in adoption promotion fees. The mechanism for the state to give us these fees are, is, is always sort of a little bit behind. It comes in the fiscal year following when the adoptions that generated these, uh, promotion fees, uh, happen, so the state has to calculate what those are, and their fiscal year ends in May. So, uh, we now know the numbers and the fees. It's just some recommended board action for you to allow us to accept them. But we also wanted to take this opportunity for Rebecca to give you an update on the work of our Child Protective Services Team, including in the work in the area of foster care and adoptions.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, um, to share information about the foster care and adoption services that Buncombe County Health and Human Services Social Work Division provides. Um, as David said, I'm Rebecca Smith, and I have, uh, had the privilege of leading this social work team for the last nine years. Um, as a reminder, the services provided, um, by our team are mandated by state and federal law and policy. While we are a county-administered system, our work is audited by our state partners, and we must work within the outlined parameters. We aim to meet and exceed expectations through structured oversight, innovative practices, and a focus on family engagement and healing. We cannot provide these services without a highly skilled, committed, and resilient workforce. First and foremost, our mandate is to prioritize the safety of children. Oh, sorry, sorry about that. There we go. First and foremost, our mandate is to prioritize the safety of children in our community. We work to support the safety of children in the homes of their biological parents or relatives whenever possible. When that is not possible, we are mandated to provide permanency for children in a timely manner so they are not lingering in the system, and so they have the forever family they deserve. Throughout the continuum of services, we address the educational, emotional, physical, and mental health needs of children and their family members. These are the outcomes by which we are, our work is measured. We conduct this work across a continuum of services, including CPS intake, assessments, family in-home, and permanency planning. When someone suspects a child is being abused or neglected, they call our hotline, eight-two-eight-two-five-zero-five-nine-zero-zero. Our intake workers take reports from concerned community members, law enforcement partners, school partners, hospital staff, and others anytime, day or night, every day of the year. We screen over three hundred and fifty reports every month, and about sixty-five percent of the calls are screened in, uh, meeting the criteria for allegations of physical or sexual abuse, neglect, or dependency by a legal caretaker. When cases are screened in for assessment, our social workers respond to the family's home, the hospital, or other locations to observe and interview the children, interview the parents, other household members, and other people who may have information about the family and the reported child maltreatment concerns. The assessment worker crisis plans with the family to ensure immediate safety of the children, and then may take up to forty-five days to gather information and decide if there is enough evidence to support a finding of physical or sexual abuse or neglect based on parental substance use, domestic violence, unsafe care, supervision, or discipline. When, um, if we are able to make a plan to keep a child immediately safe from harm, but there is a finding of abuse or neglect, the case transfers to family in-home, where our team works in partnership with the family and community providers to intervene through services, supports, and ongoing safety plans to prevent children from entering foster care. At any given time, we are working with about a hundred and twenty families to keep high-risk children safe in our community. When despite all efforts, we are unable to develop a plan that will keep children safe in the legal custody of their parents, we petition the court to remove children from their parents and place them in a court-sanctioned placement or in a licensed foster home. Buncombe County Health and Human Services has custody of about three hundred children. The work that we do in permanency planning related to children in foster care is all overseen by a juvenile court judge. When a child enters custody, we are fully responsible for ensuring they are cared for through appropriate placement providers, that their mental health, physical health, dental, and educational needs are met, and that they are able to visit with their parents and siblings. We are also responsible for working with their parents to address the safety concerns that led to custody. We immediately begin to concurrently plan for the children to return safely to the care of their parents, or if that is not possible, to find a safe and permanent home with an alternative caregiver, ideally a family member. Our permanency planning social workers work with many stakeholders, including the guardian at Lydum, parents and their attorneys, foster or resource parents, providers like doctors, therapists, teachers. Because we have children who are in placements all over the state of North Carolina, our social workers drive a lot. They go and visit, um, children in their placements every single month. In Buncombe, in Buncombe County, we focus heavily on the needs of parents who have children in foster care with the hopes of reunifying families. We have implemented specialized practices related to domestic violence and substance use interventions to better address and alleviate safety concerns, and we provide evidence-based parenting supports. To truly help children heal from traumatic experiences, we know we must help parents begin to heal. When children cannot be with their biological parents, we prioritize placement with extended family members and fictive kin providers. We invest in family finding to connect children with their family members, and we work to support relatives through our kinship support specialists and our licensing team. We also provide trauma-informed family time visitation at the Grace Center, where foster children visit with their parents and siblings according to the number of supervised visits ordered by the juvenile court. Visitation coaches transport children to and from these visits and supervise the parents' contact. Seeing their children on a regular basis can motivate parents to take the steps needed to increase safety and move toward reunification. Having a safe, family-centered, and welcoming environment like the Grace Center helps families feel more at home when they are visiting with one another for two to six hours at a time. They are able to prepare food in the kitchen, play games in the family room, and go outside, um, to the playground for fresh air.
Rebecca, I just want to remind the board what the Grace Center is and that lease that we have, so if you can speak a little bit about that, that would be helpful.
Of course, yes. So several years ago, we were able to obtain a lease with the Rathbun House, which is across from Mission Hospital, um, and they had already built a children's wing, uh, so it was very lucky for us, and we were able to occupy that children's wing. It has beautiful murals on the wall, multiple, um, uh, safe spaces for, uh, family members to visit in, um, and we operate a team of six, um, five social workers, uh, social, uh, four social work assistants, and one social worker, two, and a supervisor, um, out of that building who helped to provide this family time visitation. Yes, we also, uh, we also, um, when we have to, and I'm going to speak to this in a second, when we have to house, um, children overnight because we don't have placements, we're able to have them at the Grace Center. It is not a licensed facility, but it is a much more family-centered, child-centered space for them to sleep in. And yes, so I'm about to speak to building placement resources. Um, to ensure that three hundred-plus children in our custody have a safe and appropriate placement, we license our own fa- foster families. Work in partnership with our local management entity, which is currently Vaya, uh, to locate therapeutic placements and also access placements through private child placement agencies like Alita Homes, Black Mountain Homes, and Crossmore. We have continued to have challenges in finding placements for children with complex behavioral health needs, and there are times when children stay overnight with our Buncombe County staff. We continue to look for ways to expand our resources and reduce the likelihood of a child being without placement, as this takes a heavy toll on the child and on our staff who must work long hours to ensure children's needs are met. We are proactively collaborating with Blue Cross Blue Shield as they prepare to launch the Child and Family Services Plan, um, and are hoping to influence their provider network. We will also be contracting with Foster Family Alliance of North Carolina beginning later this fiscal year, using the adoption funds that we are talking about this evening. Children exit foster care in a variety of ways and based on court order. Our first goal is always to safely reunify children with their parents, and we are, we are able to do this in about forty percent of cases. When that cannot happen, we concurrently work to find a safe forever home for children with a relative or other appropriate person, like a licensed foster parent. We rely heavily on foster parents to provide permanency for children who have no other safe option. All of these permanency options can look different or di- for different children as each family is unique. Last fiscal year, thirty-nine percent of all children exiting care were reunified with one or both parents. One example, um, from this subset was a sibling set of three. They were returned to the care of their mother and father after both parents engaged with Circle of Security Parenting, Triple P, obtained safe and stable housing, and attended therapy for themselves and their children. An extended trial home placement took place where our social workers were able to monitor the behaviors of the parents and the care the children were receiving, and the children were being supervised appropriately, and their needs were met, so we were able to close our case. Last fiscal year, twenty-four percent of all, uh, children exited, um, of all the children that exited care, uh, were adopted. Two children who achieved adoption with a forever family were fourth-grade biracial twins who were adopted by a distant relative after we were able to work successfully with the state of North Carolin- or state of South Carolina with the ICPC process. Last fiscal year, nineteen percent of children exited care through custody or guardianship, which is a less permanent option to achieving permanency through alternative caregivers. A two-year-old was adjudicated a neglected juvenile and found permanency through guardianship with her paternal grandmother after efforts were made to support the biological mother with her co-occurring mental health and substance use, and the father with his substance use and criminal activities. That child had been placed with the relatives since shortly after birth. And finally, sixteen percent of children exited care by turning eighteen. This is never the goal, however, this does occur, um, and when it does, we work to sign these young adults up for our extended foster care program where we can support them with housing, finishing school, finding employment, and learning life skills until the age of twenty-one. So this year, uh, Buncombe County finalized thirty-eight adoptions. Um, nine of those were , uh, youth who were over the age of ten. There were several sibling sets that, who were adopted together, and forty-five percent of these, um, children were adopted by relatives. A child achieves a safe, permanent living arrangement through adoption when the court rules to terminate the rights of the biological parents, or the parent chooses to relinquish their rights, and appropriately matched forever home is identified, and that adoptive relationship is finalized through a court process. Post-adoption services are provided, including adoption assistance, vendor payments, and specialized mental health and behavioral health services. The funding that we are asking you to receive on our behalf helps to support children in foster care who have a permanent plan of adoption. We are able to pay for placement supports, clothing, therapeutic interventions, and other supplies for these children using these funds. We are also able to put systemic supports in place, like our new partnership with the Foster Family Alliance. We are also able to put systemic supports in place, like our new partnership with the Foster Family Alliance. Children in foster care deserve a safe and stable placement until they can reunify with their biological family or achieve an alternative permanent plan like adoption. Many children do experience this stability and are served effectively through kinship families or traditional f- family foster homes. It is much more challenging to meet the needs of children with complex behavioral health needs. We can continue to achieve better safety, permanency, and well-being outcomes for the children and families we serve by building upon our resources through foster parent recruitment, staffing within state standards, and through effective community partnerships. We can also continue to recognize the significant toll the foster care experience takes on children, families, and the social workers and other helping professionals who engage with these families through cultural humility, trauma-responsive practices, and continuing to build a child-serving system that is able to respond effectively to their needs. If you or someone you know is interested in fostering in Buncombe County, please call us or email us, uh, to get signed up for the upcoming class. Thank you for your time.
Thanks Rebecca. Are there any questions for Rebecca or David?
Yes, first of all, thank you so much for this very important work, and, uh, I know there's been a lot of challenges with it over the past several years. And so it sounds like we need more families to adopt children. Is one of our challenges, is that one of the key challenges we're continuing to have?
Yes, so I think it's twofold. Um, it is, uh, while children and, children are in foster care and awaiting permanency either through reunification or through adoption, they need, um, stable homes with foster families um, who are able to meet complex behavioral health needs. Um, they, these are not children who are necessarily easy. Um, and the reason they're not easy is because of what they have experienced, right? They have been through a lot by the time they get into our foster care system. And so, um, we are in need of foster families who are willing to become therapeutically licensed to work with some of our private child placement agencies, um, and who are willing to stick by our children even when they have those trauma symptoms, when they're displaying those trauma symptoms. Um, so that's the first part. And then, once, um, children are legally free for adoption, we do have a small population within our, um, foster care population of children who are legally free for adoption, who do not have an identified permanent home. And so, we, um, that's, uh, the contract that we're doing with Foster Family Alliance is going to, uh, focus on child-specific recruitment for those children, to find homes for those specific children.
Thank you for that additional clarification. And then with the, the children, I think it was the extended foster program?
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell us a little bit more about that? And what are the specific, are there specific needs around that program that, that you're experiencing as well?
Um, sure. So, um, we have an extended foster care program, and, um, the program entails, uh, youth who are aging out of foster care, who, um, voluntarily agree to stay in foster care until the a- age of twenty-one. And we are able to supplement their, um, housing either as, uh, if they want to live independently or if they are living with a foster family or in another type of placement. Um, we are able to pay for that placement for them, um, as long as they are either employed or, um, uh, in an educational setting. And so, um, really what we need for these individuals is just community support. Um, if, uh, if, you know, if there's jobs available, if they are, um, uh, we take, uh, donations for things like, um, pots and pans to get them set up in their apartments, things like that. Um, and, um, just are always trying to help support them in building self-sufficiency skills. So that's, that's really, uh, that program. And our biggest effort is just to keep them engaged in that program because it is voluntary. They can choose to leave at any time, but they can come back. And so we're just encouraging them to stay, take advantage of those opportunities, and help set them up for a bright future. Thank, thank you very much.
I do want to say, I just wanted to say thank you so much for all that you do. As a former, um, licensed foster parent here in Buncombe County, I know how hard you work and your team works, so just thank you so much. Um, I could not be a foster parent, but Kurt, could I donate pots and pans to those twenty-one-year-olds? Is that?
To your point, we collect that stuff, so you can just drop it off.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. Big part of my heart.
Absolutely, thank you.
Great work.
All right, thank you both. We really appreciate it.
So you have a budget amendment before you?
Do you have a budget amendment? Yes, go ahead Terry.
I'll make the motion to accept the funding and amend the budget.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have one other new business item. Jennifer Pike is joining us this evening, um, with our annual property tax settlement. Good evening Jennifer.
Thank you Chair Edwards, uh, Commissioners. So we've started a new fiscal year, and I'll join you for, um, two items in one meeting. The annual settlement for the prior fiscal year and the order of collection for the current fiscal year. A few notes on the annual settlement. The annual settlement that is provided in the board agenda is as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. It does require approval, and it's made up of several components. One is the summary of net levy and collections for Buncombe County and all the jurisdictions and districts we bill and collect on behalf of for fiscal twenty-five. Additionally, there's a report that's provided by the state for the property tax collections for registered motor vehicles. Also included is a list of unpaid fiscal year twenty-twenty-five property taxes and a list of taxpayers who have been found to be insolvent. That is uncollectible personal prob- property taxes. Reasons for insolvency could be a business closed. We cannot, cannot locate the property. The property could be owned by someone different than the bill, the owner on the bill. So those are uncollectible. A few notes on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five settlement for Buncombe County. The Buncombe County regular property collection rate at June thirtieth, so this excludes registered motor vehicle taxes. This is, um, real estate and personal property, was ninety-nine point five-four percent of a net levy in the amount of two-hundred-fifty-six million, three-hundred-fourteen thousand, one-hundred-ninety-seven dollars, leaving one million, one-hundred-seventy-four thousand, seven-hundred-seventy-six dollars uncollected as of June thirtieth. To compare to last June thirtieth, we were ninety-nine point eight-zero percent collected with four-hundred-ninety-two thousand, four-hundred-thirty dollars uncollected. I'll also note here that you see, um, monthly reports from me that are an overall colle- total collection rate. So through June thirty, including registered motor vehicles, this year was ninety-nine point four-five percent. Last year was ninety-nine point seven-eight percent. I will pause on this table for just a moment. This is the regular collection rates by taxing districts for all the municipalities and the vol- the fire protection and ambulance and rescue service districts. This is the regular collection rates for fiscal twenty-five and fiscal twenty-four. This does exclude the registered motor vehicle tax.
Just a quick question Jennifer.
Absolutely.
Can you remind me why we exclude the motor vehicles when you're doing this report?
This report is intended to be the, the billing and collection that happens within Buncombe County. The registered motor vehicle billing happens by the state and is collected by the state, and we're a pass-through for that.
Thanks for the reminder.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions for Jennifer? You have more to your presentation.
I do, yes.
Sorry.
I, I think on that slide Commissioner, one thing that notice is almost in every jurisdiction, because of Helene, we're slightly below our collection rate for last year. So not only are we seeing a reduction in revenue for the county, but every jurisdiction is also seeing the same.
It looks like Montreat was slightly up, and that was it. Thank you for calling that to our attention. Further questions? All right Jennifer.
So the second item is the order of collection. This is the order to collect the fiscal twenty-twenty-six regular property taxes. It does require adoption. This is my authorization and direction to collect the property taxes, to maximize the property tax and revenues for not only Buncombe County, but all those taxing jurisdictions that we are responsible for billing and collecting on behalf of. So the two requested actions I have for you this afternoon are approval of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five annual settlement and adoption of the order of collection for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. And I'm absolutely happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Are there any other questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five annual settlement? Thank you Commissioner Whitesides and Horton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Oh, yes, and then we're, yeah, we need a second, a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the order of collection for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioner Wells and Horton. All in favor, say aye.
Second.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Were you going to say something Avril?
I just want to take a moment to thank Jennifer and her team for the hard work they have done this year. One of the things that she led with was heart and compassion because she knew what our community had just gone through, and to bring in a collection rate of ninety-nine point five-four on rega collections and an overall of ninety-nine point four-five, slightly below last year, but still way above where we were expecting to be when we started talking about Helena Helene recovery. I just want to say thanks to Jennifer and the collection team for the work that they've done just to balance the collection and need of the operations as well as the need of the community, the compassion that she showed. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you Avril. I think we can all echo those sentiments as well. You had a really tough year, and your team just did an incredible job. We really appreciate you and are grateful for your work in a really tough time.
They certainly did, and I'm very, very proud of them.
Thank you Jennifer.
Thank y'all.
All right Commissioners, that brings us to the end of our new business this evening. We do have several board appointments to make. We'll start with our Historic Resources Commission. Um, this is a three-year term. We do have one appointment to make. Um, and Jenny Bowen is... Jenny has currently, has served on this, am I correct? Okay, so this would be a reappointment for Jenny? Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Jenny will serve in that role. Thanks y'all. All right, our Early Childhood Education, um, Committee has four appointments to make, and, um, Vice Chair Moore, do you have any?
I do have a motion, but can I, can I add one thing real quick?
Absolutely.
Sarah and Kurt, you're going to drive, this is going to drive you crazy as a fellow lawyer. Can we not include people who are not eligible to serve as part of our list of people to appoint? If they're not eligible, I don't really see... I'm not sure why they're showing up as a recommended appointment. It looks like we're picking when we really can't pick them. Does that make sense? Oh, okay. Yeah, because we don't typically put everyone who's applied for every board, right? I mean, we usually whittle that list down, so we don't have like, a whole bunch of folks who are not eligible. Okay, let's chat about that.
Okay.
Anyway, uh, I'll make a motion to appoint Joe Jamison, Stacy Anderson, Sarah... Oh God, um, Cobb... Kaboric, sorry Sarah, uh, Melanie Sherman.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We spent several hours today interviewing for our small, Swannanoa Small Area and Resilience Plan Steering Committee. And the staff did make recommendations to us. We interviewed additional candidates, and, um, all of those folks that applied were listed. Those were not all that we, we did not interview all of those folks. And at the beginning of our meeting, we did make, uh, change to our rec- our resolution adding two alternate positions to this steering committee. This committee's going to be meeting for a long time, much like our comprehensive plan. So we wanted to make sure that if someone couldn't serve throughout the entirety of the committee, that we had folks waiting, ready to go, those alternates will still participate. And, um, I think, um, we will need a motion to, um...
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes.
Briefly, just, I just want to say how heartwarming it was, um, and how inspiring it was. The number of people that applied to be part of this effort and help lead this was incredible, and it just shows the heart and the commitment to recovery, the commitment of Swannanoa taking care of their neighbors. It was just so many phenomenal applicants. Um, I wish we could appoint more, but it was really, really, uh, difficult decisions. But I'm excited about the work they're going to put forward.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Make before we?
Yes, go ahead Commissioner Horton.
So, in the interest of full transparency and to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I want to publicly disclose that a relative of mine is an applicant of the small, of the Swannanoa Small Area Plan Committee. I have consulted with the board's attorney, and it has been confirmed that there is no conflict of interest. I simply wanted to make that clear and put it on record. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Horton, we appreciate that. All right, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion. And if you want to check my work, what I'm going to do is list all the na- I'm going to read all their names because they deserve to have their names read, uh, including some from the staff recommended group as well as a couple from the unstaffed recommended group. And then at the end, I will list the two, uh, names for the, uh, alternates.
Okay, great.
So, DeeDee Stiles, Beth Trigg, Carol Groban, Deanna Lydell, Jared Penland, Casey Watkins, Tanya Allen, Josiah Rogers, Kate Kramer, Joshua Anderson, RJ Taylor, Jeremy Knighton, Matt Barker. That's the, I think that, uh, I think that's thirteen. Somebody double-check me. Okay, thirteen. And then two alternates within this motion would be Rob Atima and Nancy Waldrop.
All right, second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yeah, that seems fair.
Do you want to do that Commissioners alone?
Uh, DeeDee Stiles, Beth Trigg, Carol Groban, I'm trying to see if you're catching up. Deanna Lydell, Jared Penland, Casey Watkins, uh, Tanya Allen, Josiah Rogers, Kate Kramer, Joshua Anderson, RJ Taylor, Jeremy Knighton, Matthew Barker. That's the thirteen. Two alternates would be Rob Atima and Nancy Waldrop.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain?
I'm going to abstain for the record Sarah, only because I was not here for the interviews this morning.
Thank you Vice Chair Moore. All right, we have a great new steering committee. It, I, I really have to echo as well that hearing people who have been fifth, sixth generation Swannanoa residents apply because they care so deeply about their community and about where Swannanoa goes in the future. And hearing folks talk about the deep relationships and how important that is to the steering plan, I'm excited to see the work that they do for us and on behalf of us over the next few months. So we've got a great group and look forward to getting them up and running. All right. Commissioners, are, those of you who are serving, um, in, on boards in relation to your work as a commissioner, are there any updates at this time?
Sure, um, on the Justice Resource Advisory Council, we are undergoing a process of make sure we keep our community safe, having some meaningful discussions about, um, many important safety topics, including, um, what a re-envision pre-trial looks like, all the things that are going along with, um, justice services, and kind of reconfiguring what the board looks like to have more community input, um, including bringing in some exciting new members to our group that will bring in folks from downtown, bring in business partners, everyone who has a dog in that fight as far as making sure Asheville is as safe as possible.
That's great. Thank you. Are there any other updates? I will note that Judy Lewis, who we have appointed, um, as a Board of Commissioners to serve on the AB Tech Board of Trustees, was elected the vice chair of that board yesterday. And she said she was very proud to represent the Board of Commissioners appointment as she was selected to serve in that leadership role for the college. All right, announcements, the next briefing and regular meeting will be on August nineteenth, starting at three P M. All right, announcements, the next briefing and regular meeting will be on August nineteenth, starting at three P.M. Kurt, I believe you have a motion for closed session. All right, thank you. So we will adjourn from that. Thank you, and we will not come back here as we will adjourn with no formal action. All right, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are in closed session.